Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on City Council. I want to welcome you to tonight's City Council meeting. Right now, I would ask that my council members please stand for a moment of silence and everyone stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a call meeting July 12, 2022, and a regular meeting on July 12, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. One second. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker statement for this evening?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe the basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We have now come to item on our agenda, City Managers' Report, Item 22-224. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a Virginia Homeless Solutions Program grant in the amount of $5,374 from the Department of Housing and Community Development and appropriating said sum in the FY 2023 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services for Portsmouth Continuum of Care Planning activities.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Thank you. And we do have a speaker. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, if you would come forward, state your address and name. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Churchland. 22-224 is an ordinance to accept over $5,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development Division called Virginia Homeless Solution Program for the use by the Department of Social Services for Portsmouth Continuum of Care Planning activities. A report was submitted to the city manager by the interim director of Social Service. In the background information, a continuum of care is a regional or local planning body that coordinates housing and services funding for homeless families and adults. Who is the regional and local planning body? Where are the agencies listed in the organizational chart of the city? And as you see, I've got the budget book to be my holy planning directing to know stuff. All right. Where are the agencies listed on the organizational chart of the city? This continuum of care program is designed to promote community-wide commitment to the goal of ending homelessness, provide funding for efforts by nonprofit providers and state and local governments to quickly rehouse homeless individuals and families to minimize the trauma from dislocation. The nonprofit providers will promote access to and cause utilization of mainstream programs and optimal optimize self-sufficiency among those experienced homelessness. The continuum of care planning projects require a local match of 25%. This 25 local match has already been appropriated for the year 2023 Department of Social Service budget. Amendment to the grant agreement reports the original award of over $4,000 and this increase in funding of over $5,000 with the amended award of over $9,000. There are three research questions to have answered to understand how these homeless individuals or families are being identified. I report homeless people all the time to the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services. The homeless are still hanging around Wawa on Frederick Boulevard. Where are the reports to notify the people that an individual or family has been found and relocated? Where in the budget book is the grant funds noted? Where is a copy of the updated form given to the people to put in the Department of Social Service category to amend the money coming in and the money being spent? In the budget book, under Social Services Fund, the list includes salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges, capital, aid, lay, and transfer. The social services are to increase community partnership to provide wraparound services and continuity of care for those in need, increase opportunities for employability for residents who are recipients of TANF and SNAP. Where are the statistics to prove that your goals are being accomplished? Where is the evidence to support the continuity of care's accomplishment? Continuum of care's accomplishment? I need evidence to support everything that is being reported. If reports are not provided to the people, then someone is not doing his or her job to keep the people informed. Who is going to provide me with the information I need, or am I going to be blown off? This is an example of how I can ask, who is representing the Churchland District sitting up on City Council? I know all the five representatives are elected at large, but the five to take upon themselves to volunteer to take one of the five districts downtown, Craddock, Cavalier Manor, Hodges Manor, and Churchland. Then they could let the people know who they will be representing that year. All people have needs, not just homeless.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Armando Grande Gomez. Sir, if you would step forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando Grande Gomez, 6010 California Circle. Mr. Mayor, well, I appreciate the previous speaker's comment about homeless, but I want to give a face to homeless. The person you see before you was once homeless. I was a homeless veteran. I wasn't on any kind of drugs or alcohol. I just was displaced. And so I want to give a face to what it looks like. That was a quickest five minutes I've ever seen.
Sir, continue with your comments, please.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. White. I would want to encourage us to look outside the box when we come to throwing money and trying to address the things. For example, the VA has many different programs, the Department of Veteran Affairs for the federal government, whether it's different types of grants, SSVF, HUD-VAS. We should create regional partnerships and not try to do everything ourselves. Many times, when it comes to government, we try to be the one size, the silver bullet, the one size that fits all. I don't think that's necessarily what you're trying to do here, but I want to encourage us to dig deeper and look at this as a chronic issue that affects people. Sometimes people just are down on luck and have things happen to them. Sometimes people are dealing with mental health issues. Sometimes they are dealing with it. But I will say this for veterans. I will say this. There should not be homeless veterans. And I'm going to say that again and be clear why. There is resources for veterans, but what if you're not a veteran? Mr. Gomez, we're not talking about, what about these people that aren't veterans? That's exactly right. People are displaced and people need rapid rehousing, all kinds of things. And then sometimes there are folks that just want to be by themselves or be in it. But we all want to be loved. We all want to be cared about. There's somebody's sister, brother, aunt, aunt, uncle. It could be one of your loved ones. So again, I want to give a face to what homelessness is. And just because you have a setback doesn't mean that it has to be that continued. I'm not homeless anymore, but I was very blessed and encouraged to have somebody get into housing to where I could go and finish school while I was at a place of shelter and over me. I was able to finish school, and I'm going for a master's degree now because I was able to do a reset. And so I refuse to sit here and say that we define it as a bad person. They're not bad people. They're just people. People that need to be loved and cared about. Mr. Mayor, I don't want to ramble. I know I've got time, but I'm not going to use all of it up. So I just want to encourage you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council members, is there any additional discussion on this matter? Seeing none, we're in need of a motion and a second. We have the motion and a second. And so, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Sorry. I'm moving to get a second.
Did you want to speak, sir?
I'm good.
Oh, okay. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Our next item on the agenda, item 22-225. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting substance use disorder state and local recovery workforce initiative funding in the amount of $37,500 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 BHS Fund for the purpose of providing hiring, retention incentives, and training for BHS staff.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we do have two speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, if you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Churchland. 22-225 is an ordinance to accept over $37,000 for the Behavioral Healthcare Services Department to provide hiring, retention incentives, and training for the Behavioral Healthcare Services staff, which includes 121 employees. The money is coming from the Substance Use Disorder State and Local Recovery Workshop Initiative, a division of the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. The financial impact statement reports that no local match is required as a condition of receiving the funds except as may be provided in the community services performance contract with the Commonwealth approved by City Council Resolution R-21-22 adopted on August 10, 2021. Any required local match has previously been appropriated as part of the year 2023 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund budget. Where is the information regarding City Council Resolution R-21-22 adopted on August 10, 2021? Where is the documentation to support this workforce initiative? Where in the budget book is the grant funds noted? Where is a copy of the updated form given to the people to put in the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to amend the money coming in and the money being spent? In the budget book, under Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund, the list includes salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges, capital, aid, lay, and transfers. There is no division of the Behavioral Healthcare Services for hiring, retention incentives, and training for their 121 staff. Why not? If money's going to be needed for this division, how come it is not in the budget book? We need an amended page for this division of the Behavioral Healthcare Services Department.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Armando Grande Gomez. Thank you, sir. Council members, is there any additional discussion on this matter? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes, ma'am. Item 22-226. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting mental health block grant workforce initiative funding in the amount of $21,250 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 BHS Fund for the purpose of providing hiring, retention incentives, and training for BHS staff.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
And we do have two speakers for this item. Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Churchland. 22-226 is an ordinance to accept over $21,000 for the Behavioral Healthcare Services Department to provide hiring, retention, incentives, and training for the 121 Behavioral Healthcare Services staff. The money is coming from the Mental Health Block Grant Workforce Initiative Funding, a division of the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. The financial impact statement reports that no local match is required as a condition of receiving the funds except as may be provided in the community services performance contract with the Commonwealth approved by City Council Resolution R-21-22 adopted on August 10, 2021. Any required local match has previously been appropriated as part of the 2023 year Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund budget. Where is a copy of the updated form given to the people to put in the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services page in the budget book to amend the money coming in and the money being spent? In the budget book, under Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund, the list includes salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges, capital, aid, lay, and transfers. There is no division of the Behavioral Healthcare Services for hiring, retention, incentives, and training for their staff. Why not? If money is going to be needed for this division, how come it is not in the budget book? We need an amended page for the Behavioral Healthcare Services Department so we, the people, know about how our money is being used.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Armando Grande Gomez. State your name and address, sir, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando Grande Gomez, 6010 California Circle. I think this is probably going to be one of the, in this decade, what we're seeing now when it comes to mental health, there is never enough dollars, it appears, to go forward in any municipality. That's not just germane to here. Look throughout the country. Look at our police officers. They're asked to do a lot of things, be mental health specialists, and I don't have to say that, Mr. Mayor, to a city manager who used to be the police chief, of what police officers have to deal with every day. We always talk about how much we love and support our police, but they're having to do a lot of different duties, whether it be mental health counselors, a lot of things that they're dealing with. And it's not just police officers, but a lot of people struggle with it. This is something that is a very serious thing, that there's never enough resources that we could ever have enough. So I don't have an answer to it. I don't think even the state has enough resources. Even the federal government is not putting resources, but somebody has to figure out a way that we address this issue because collectively, we are losing. We are losing a battle where people are really struggling things, even after coming off of 28 months of this worldwide pandemic, what people are dealing with. And I'll have to tell you whether you correlate that with crime rates of what people are dealing with. Mental health is a substantial. Of course, we can look at and point to this price and, you know, where it is in this budget, but I got to tell you, we've got to collectively look together to put resources to address it. We can't put everything on one sector of government, especially when 51% of most budgets in municipalities is public safety. I think what we need to do, Mr. Mayor, what I would look at, and I don't know because I haven't really looked at your budget, but that's also where, you know, municipalities show what they value by what they put in their budget. And I think that if we are asking, I think, instead of asking our police officers, not just, you know, lowering of the short staff, having people to work in conjunction with them and mental health resource, I'm not going to do verbal sound. So I don't know. I don't have an answer to this, but I just want to encourage you all to seek out more funding and opportunities and partnerships with people to grow this and address this. It's a serious crisis that we all need to address. Thank you. And I'm not using five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Council members, is there any additional question amongst us? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to item 22-227. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution supporting a smart scale application for the City of Portsmouth Complete High Street Innovation Corridor project.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we're in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will have an opportunity to respond after we allow the speakers to speak, okay, sir? So we do have two speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive, Churchland. 22-227, agenda item, is a resolution to support a smart scale application for the city to complete High Street Innovation Corridor project. The application deadline is August 1. The city engineers report to the city manager regards this information. The engineer is seeking state funding for the project of over $10 million for the year 2025. The cost is over $9 million for the year 2023. There's nothing in the capital improvement plan for this project. Let's review some of the current projects in the budget book to see how decisions have been made without the people's knowledge or consent, such as capital improvement for City Hall elevators replacement, 1846 courthouse to provide drainage and replacement of HVAC system, hazmat program to remove and dispose of hazardous material properly with no statement of where the hazmat material are coming from, Union Bank and Trust Pavilion to eliminate the need for large capital expenditures at one time, repair of the social service building, fire station repair, operations center repair, new city hall. Say what? New city hall? The city already has a public safety complex that has a consolidated operation in a centralized location. The Public Works Director has failed to oversee the maintenance of the infrastructure in our city. The city's Public Works Department has a plan. Don't take care of anything so it can be demolished. The cities elected and appointed do not honor our American history. I hear it all the time. Thank God, we have social groups who want to maintain the history of our city, such as the African Americans Historical Society and our civic leagues. Put the $10 million and the $4 million on the rehabilitation of the police headquarters and put the police department back in their home in the civic center. Fix the local jail and put the administrative offices of the sheriff and fire departments in the civic center. Fix the museum, 206 High Street, and move the African American Historical Society and the museum where it belongs and stop trying to spend money without the people's consent. Let's honor our people. Let's hold the Public Works Director accountable for not overseeing the repair and rehabilitation of infrastructure such as the Port Norfolk Rec Center and our historic buildings. Stop trying to get money and spend money with no prioritization of projects without the people's consent. As Mayor Glover said at the Taking Back the Community event on Saturday, "I am the community. This is my community. I live here. I work here. My business is here. Everything I believe Portsmouth will be and can be, I am invested in it." He went on to say, "My vision for Portsmouth is to be a safe community where people can raise a family, enjoy the historic waterfront," and that the city is working tirelessly to reach that vision. So you see, the director of Public Works and the city's engineer do not have the people's vision. The people are not safe living in Portsmouth, whether by gun violence or decisions being made by the elected and appointed. God save our historic city and hold accountable the Public Works Director and the engineer who are not doing their job to save our city's history.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Armando Grande Gomez. Ma'am, if you would, sir, if you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando Grande Gomez, 6010 California Circle. I actually, this is something I always get excited about when it comes to transportation, especially when you're picking critically needed transportation issues. My thing is, I know you want to look at a corridor. Instead of looking at something like this building that may need, may or may not need to move, that's a decision that you all will need to make, the seven of you up there, and then have your city manager or whoever's going to do that assess the needs of that of what that's going to look like. But this is probably prime redevelopment area, I would imagine. If this building were to, you know, you were moved somewhere else, I don't know. I'm sure this area and the building next to it are probably prime real estate on your waterfront. I don't know. But normally, when cities are looking to have those kind of redevelopment things along the corridor, especially like High Street, you have to look at things like a canvas. And instead of playing checkers, you need to play chess. And when you play chess, you look at how we're going to do a lot of the things that we want to do. When you have redevelopment of areas like that, making sure, you know, it's not an and/or. Good leaders will say, we can do both. So for an example, Mr. Mayor, I have to always talk to you through the rest of the body. So, Mr. Mayor, like when we want to do big projects and we want to say, well, we want to include people that have not been included for, that's an and. We can do that. We can include people that have been left out, whether it be having an early terror program, which I think you already have in your set of codified rules and procedures and policies now, to include minority contractors that have been traditionally left out so that we are including those disadvantaged groups. When we want to do these things, because, listen, when everybody wins, when things get on the tax roll, this building is not on the tax roll. If this were to become something else and repurposed, I don't know. Do you have more ad valorem or more money going into your tax roll? You probably do. So transportation is what we're talking about, and I need to stay germane to the topic. So I look at things like what we can do to move people. The current administration has a policy out there. You may want to look into it. It's called the Justice 40 Policy. The Justice 40 Policy says that 60% of federal dollars go toward capital projects and 40% of them go to disadvantaged communities. And let me clearly define what that may mean. Disadvantaged communities doesn't mean just demographics. People that live in rural areas are considered also a disadvantaged group. Why? Further from healthcare, further from food sources, further from education services. Probably doesn't necessarily germane to you, but if your regional transit provider that you have that services the other side of the water, over there, we'll call that the Upper East Side, like they do in Brooklyn, the good folks over there, if they're getting all your dollars and resources and you're not necessarily getting the services, you may need to look at building a new team and how that redefine what that looks like. Include your other neighbors, Suffolk, Chesapeake, and do your own. Include your other neighbors, Suffolk, Chesapeake, and do your own thing. Why are you not having rail to move your people to and from and where they should go? I'm sure people that want to get here, want to get here to get to a job. We need to start moving our people more efficiently, and we can do that. I want to encourage y'all to dig deep and be innovative. Don't be afraid and don't run from it, dig deep. Play chess, not checkers.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues on council? Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is directed to the city manager. Could you please go into details, I mean, give us the details and the upgrades that's associated with this smart scale application? Because it's a lot of great information, I think, that the public need to know that's associated with this High Street Innovation Corridor Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, some background information. The Smart Scale is a result of an intensive collaborative effort by the Commonwealth to bring localities and regional bodies across the state together to develop an outcome-based scoring system for transportation projects. And some of the discussion included VDOT is accepting smart scale applications. The project includes scenic, streetscaping, utility relocations, high-visibility crosswalks, sidewalk upgrades, and shared youth paths, as well as the project reduces travel lanes from four lanes to two. And, and we're seeking funding for the project.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and Madam City Manager.
Are there any additional questions or concerns? Seeing none, then Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. That concludes our city manager's report. We have now come to new business items. Item 22-228, boards and commissions. And Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you, sir. Item 22-229, items submitted by council members. Council members, do you have any items to submit? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Based on our earlier discussion pertaining to the Port Norfolk Rec Center, would like to, Mayor, if it's appropriate, a motion or consensus of council to direct our city manager to move forward with an RFP on the redevelopment of the Port Norfolk Rec Center, so that we can consider that in our deliberations on what we're planning on doing.
Our colleague has presented that as a point of consideration, and we will need to have a consensus so that we can ask our city manager to move forward with the request. Can I get a show of hands for consensus to move forward? Or if we have any comments or questions? So, if everyone would show by consensus to put their hands for an RFP process? I see three folks with their hands up, four people with their hands up. So, we'll move forward with the RFP process. Madam City Manager, if you would bring back, or get that process started so that we could get some information to review regarding an RFP?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional items to consider from our members on council? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
This would be for our city manager for our next public work session. If we could, if it is consensus of council, we could get an update on the disparity study, where we are with the disparity study. Also, the ARPA funding, as far as how that allocation will be. And our discussion on the waterfront development as far as what will be our approach to that RFP. Then, we need to have some serious discussion and direction on where we're going with that. And then, at our last meeting, there was some discussion about the charter, and would like, this for our city attorney as well, would like to revisit, given the way that the charter amendments were handled at the legislation, legislature at the last session, would like to put a process in place where we can have those charter amendments reconsidered for our next legislative session. And that being the non-interference, as well as the recall.
Well, is the request to have those reinstated as a part of our legislative agenda?
Right. There's a process that has to take place, and just want to make sure we're on track.
I think we have to have a discussion as a body of council before we move that forward.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, that we put that on to begin that process.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to know, I believe this is all part of his request for consensus, so there's several items that you all still need to do a show of hands to determine there's a consensus for direction to move forward. I don't know if you want to do those separately. Mr. Whitaker, or do you want them all in one?
We could do them separately if you like.
Well, if we want to take the first one for the item?
Disparity Study.
How would you like to proceed?
I can, you want me to go down the list?
Yes, if you would go down the list, then we could take a consensus.
The disparity study update.
Yes.
The ARPA funding allocation discussion. The waterfront development discussion. And the charter amendment discussion.
I just want to note for the record, there's no consensus on the last request for the charter.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is a request for our city manager as well, and it may include, may entail another department. There's been a lot of discussion about properties that have been sold over the last five years. So, if we could get, I don't know if it would be a presentation or just an email or an update to the council, but I think our citizens may want to know as well the properties that have been sold, the costs that they have been sold to, and who those owners were, so that we can see if there's been any discrepancies in properties that have been sold to minority developers versus other developers that we customarily deal with in the city.
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
I just want to confirm, is this for consensus request? Councilwoman Lucas? Okay.
We have a show of hands for consensus on the request. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items submitted by council? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine also is a request. Our city has many miles of ditches, and this time of the year, they also potentially breed a lot of mosquitoes. And, I'd like for Public Works to come back with a schedule on when those ditches are scheduled to be cleaned. And also, a schedule on when they're actually being treated for mosquitoes.
Is that also for consensus, sir?
That's got it.
Yes, do we need a consensus for that and since it's?
What was, what was that again?
It was, it was a request. Go ahead, Mr. Moody, if you could.
It's a request to, for staff to get back on the schedule on the cleaning out of the ditches throughout our city that potentially breed mosquitoes, and also the treatment of the same.
We don't need a consensus on council for that, that's just the?
It's a request.
Yeah, it's a request.
That's fine.
As a report back, I believe that?
Right, as a report back, if we could get that request. The other thing I'll add to what Mr. Moody just said, it is, we are still actively in hurricane season, and that's another reason for us to have an update on those ditches perhaps, because, you know, when they're not cleaned out and we get heavy, heavy downpours, they end up flooding neighborhoods and so, and streets. So, that will be helpful to get that back. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Yes, I'd like to add something to that. I guess with the mosquitoes, I've been getting calls from residents in Churchland about when the aerial spraying of the mosquitoes will happen. And I know that also, the Navy or military also does a spray over. So, if we can get a schedule of when that's gonna happen.
Actually, I think that's the Air Force, but?
Okay, Air Force.
It'd be good to know when that is scheduled. And one was scheduled, I think, a couple of weeks ago. Did that occur? Because I've got citizens asking about that. Okay. And one more item.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Street sweeping. That occurs throughout the city, but unfortunately, a lot of it is missed because citizens aren't made aware of when it will occur. So, we need to do a better job of publicizing the schedule so people can make arrangements to move their cars so the curbs can get swept.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, you have the floor, ma'am.
I just wanted to remind council that we only have one meeting in August, and we've asked for quite a bit to be reported on at this next meeting. Does council want to divide up some of the larger things to be reported on in September, when we have two meetings?
I would, I would, I would think that that would be appropriate, so, yes, ma'am.
I think we'll take them in order. So, Councilman Whitaker's matters will be addressed in the August timeframe, and then, the other council members' major issues will be addressed in the September meeting. Is that sufficient?
Is that acceptable, everyone?
Sure, is that the discretion of the city manager, whichever one she wants to present, I'm fine.
Thank you, thank you both. Are there any other items submitted by council? Well, I do have a couple, and I, first of all, want to thank our firefighters for taking care of that blaze that was out at our property in the City of Portsmouth early this morning. I think our landfill out in the Churchland area caught fire. And so, we want to thank them for their prompt response and taking care of that, and also making sure that they were safe and the citizens of that area were safe. In addition to that, myself and Councilwoman Lucas Burke had the pleasure of welcoming today with some other representatives here in the city, the Philippine representatives attaché from the Philippines. And we had a wonderful time welcoming that group to the City of Portsmouth, learning about how we may be able to build a better relationship and sharing resources and ideas to help improve the Philippines and the City of Portsmouth. So, we were grateful for that meeting, and we look forward to building a continued relationship. Are there any other items? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next section. Item 22-230, report on pending items. Madam City Manager, are there pending items?
No, sir, I do not have any pending items.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, we have come to item 22-231, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light. Here a beep, we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than any particular member of city council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker for this evening, Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammonds, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, and, sir, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
First of all, I know people talked about this past chief. One thing about though, is that you don't text things that you don't want read. And you need to know where it's going to before you text it, and then you don't text it. I've been a manager myself, so I know better. Everybody else should know better. Texting's gotten a lot of people in trouble, so that's the end of that. I looked at the news conference about new city manager. I looked at it very well. And I learned a few things. One thing I learned was that it's almost like an inside trading when you get a phone call before you're kind of sworn in. That's kind of hard, definitely is that. And I don't think it's fair to the other applicants that, to me, is more qualified. Regardless of what all the things that you've done, I got the resume. I looked at it, I looked at the news conference, and everything was mainly about policing that I could see. I didn't see anything about doing a budget, or what city, or anything like that that was managed. And that's where experience comes in, and also, besides education. You got to have both, regardless of what you do. You got to have, you got to work the job to have experience. You can sit there and read all the books you want to. You can be a doctor, you can finish school. But the thing about it though, when you finish school, you're still not a doctor. See? Because one thing about it, don't nobody wants you operating on, and same about you've never operated on nobody. You go through an internship, and in the police department, you're called a rookie or a trainee. But the bottom line is that really, and I know some people say, "Well, I got the job by the grace." But don't leave out the $200,000 that you end up getting too if you end up getting fired. Besides the $400,000, which you didn't ask for, which I understand that. I would take it too, in the first year, but the $200,000 is no, is no, is nothing to just say, "Well, I'll forget that." But Portsmouth can't afford to just give away money. We can't afford that. On different projects, you reject it. On some projects, you say, "Well, we're cash strapped." But yet, you're willing to suffer our income, and we are already on the low end of the scale for its, for its development and education. But yet, the thing about it, we got the highest tax rate in this area. And what are we paying for? Now, the people have fired, the other city manager claimed two things, was that high crime rate, and about selling something, land, that swamp land. But yet, now, the news conference that I read is that our new city manager's gonna be wearing two hats. Because the project, everything that was said was geared toward, which is, we got a crime rate. But the thing about it though is, the next chief, I'd like to see how that's gonna work out. Because I'd be, gonna be some heads bumped. On who gonna do what? bumped on who gonna do what. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Armando Grande Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Armando Grande Gomez, 6010 California Circle. Mr. Mayor, the one thing I was gonna ask tonight is, I noticed whenever I will call in, Anita will tell you, she probably knows me by name, Mr. Mayor. Deborah White, talked to her this week, lovely person. But I call in, and I'll call the, the city manager's office, and I know the city manager just got here, so give grace. But whenever you call in, and I don't know if it's just me, and maybe other residents might be handling or dealing with it, you call in, you get a voicemail, and on that voicemail, you hear a brother that sounds like Barry White, and he'll say, "The city manager's not available. Leave a message. We'll get back to you 24 hours." Eight weeks later, I'm still waiting for a call, and I've yet to hear that. So, I guess for me is, Mr. Mayor, the city is open for business, but why can we not get a hold of folks in government? Why is that happening? Because that's not a good look. And, and I know a lot of people like to always say we're, we're short-staffed, and that's a lot of folks. But a side effect of COVID is not, not returning calls. There's no variant out there that has broken fingers where you can't dial to return a call. There's no variant out there that locks your jaw from talking. There is none. So, I guess it's, it's not acceptable. It's not a good look. And if it happened to me, I promise you, for the people that understand my voice, I guarantee it happened to one of them. Maybe one of these people that, that vote for you. My question to all seven of you, and there's only six of you right now, but why? Why is that happening? I'll move on from that, and y'all can answer that later. But the other thing I wanted to talk about is, I wanted to encourage you all to, one thing that's always important, and I know it's a passion for me, is economic development. I get excited about economic development. Really, really, really do, because I know it can transform communities and make the lives of people better, regardless of where you come from, regardless of how you look, regardless of your gender, when it's done right. And you all have things that people say, "Well," and I've watched it when I was, when you had your last meeting, I was watching some of the comments on Facebook or what have you. "Well, we don't care if we have another car wash." When I ride through town, y'all got a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of car washes. Y'all have a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of storage places. Good night. I could choose Green Clean Machine, whatever it's called, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. That's cool, because I get my car cleaned. I'm, I'm vain about that. I want my car cleaned. But the other thing that's important is, y'all got a casino coming here. You all should complement that kind of economic development with some real bringing, what, what, what can you transform Portsmouth in the 21st century to look like? Who do you want to attract? Biotechnology? I know you all talk about, what is it, Town Bank, Citibank, whatever. Well, no, it ain't Citibank, it's Town Bank. But y'all could attract, what other kind of things? Usually when you see cranes going up, I hate to see that nice little town over there across the bay, you know, with the nice high rises. Usually when you see cranes, that's a healthy economy. Portsmouth has a lot of gems. You all are a diamond in the rough and can do a lot of things, in spite of being landlocked. And it's gonna take all of you to choose, how do you transform, how do you transmogrify a community that truly needs it? Because a rising tide lifts all ships, and everybody, no matter what they say, "I love money, I like money, I spend money." Benjamin Franklin's, you call it. We all spend them. We all gotta go grocery shopping, and we all need, we all need industry in here and jobs that pay a wage that people can live on. And maybe Green Clean, A, B, C, D car washes paying those, I don't know. But I'm sure with you, I think I heard the mayor one time say, "You all are 44% land, your land is taken off the tax rolls." Sounds like to me, y'all need some chess playing to get some industry here to transform people's lives. I don't know. That's all I wanted to say to y'all. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Armando Grande Gomez, for bringing that point up about the calls, because I believe that each of us as councilmembers received an email today from someone who mentioned that they tried to contact one of the local departments, I think it was Waste Management, and they didn't get a response, and they left a message and didn't get a call back. But I do want the citizens to know that we were closed a couple of days last week and the week before due to our failure with the air conditioning. So, hopefully, none of those calls came in during that time. But if not, then we do want to check and make sure that calls are being returned.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Coleman Young. Mr. Young, sir, if you would come forward, state your name, address, and, sir, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff. I come before you because I think the leadership of this city is going in the wrong direction. I'm all in favor of politics. I love politics. You're giving the example, if we, if the destination is Richmond, there are two ways we're getting there. You can take Interstate 64 or 460, okay? You, you can differ this and that on that. That's fine. But the problem I see is that this council, now, it's not the council. Let's get honest. It's a group, group of four people. They have control. They're driving the car. Rather than going to Richmond, they're turning around and going south, going the wrong direction. Now, I'm not here to try to change the mindset of the group of four. I'm here to be able to make an appeal to the citizens of this city to take a look at what, what we have. And that, there are four problems, I think, are, are paramount in this situation. And let me name them. One is a lack of thought-provoking process of the government, an anti-business attitude, gun, I mean, violence with a different mindset, and number four, corruption. Let's say, in the, in the, the last two or three months, what we've had. All of a sudden, we're gonna change managers. So, we cha, without any discussion about it among the councilmembers, no corrective action for them if there is a deficiency, then we hire an interim manager who does an excellent job. He was a chief for National Officer, knows the city, could work as an interim. And then we, all of a sudden, in two weeks, we hired a, a new manager. Nothing to take away from you, Ms. Chapman. But the thing is, we did not use a thought-provoked, I mean, a thought-out process of selecting. Look, I'm, I'm Portsmouth. I am, maybe I'm, maybe too sports-oriented, but if I have a choice to do something, I want the best of the best, whatever we can get. Now, it might be Ms. Chapman, it may be somebody else. And I, a business. The, you know, last session, you had a situation of a business company here gonna pay $500,000 for a piece of property. They did the due diligence and invest gain the site. They're only allowed to develop half of it. EPA gave approval on it. The Housing Authority, they did a national search to find a, a company. They did. They did the negotiation, had them ready. You have Planning Department, the United's vote to approve it. You had citizens come in. All of them were in support of it. But we have four people that voted down. We can't do that. We, a business has come, you know, we, we can't pick the winners and losers, say, "Oh, I like that business there," but, "Oh, I don't like them." No. We, we have certain parameters, and if they meet it, then we'll just welcome them up. The other is, is gun violence. The group of four, when they, when they had the initial campaign with a collection of departments and state and federal agencies, those four were not here. We're just a united front. We're just saying shoulder to shoulder, locking our arms that we're gonna fight, fight violence. It wasn't there. The other part is, the leader of a group of four is openly, he mentioned, he's not in favor of hiring police officers. Well, not at that point of hiring police officers, additional police officers. We are short of police officers, and what happens? Rather than having a response of being there in 10 minutes, might be half an hour if you're short on detectives. You know, a crime is committed after 5:00 on Friday. What if that detective is not available until Monday? You, you've seen the TV shows, 48 Hours. Those are the key hours to be able to, to, to solve crimes. The other is corruption. You have a member of the group of four that used in his position to be able to, to deceive the city and in documentation to prevent funds, paying funds to the city. You have an individual that was able to line up non-business, non-businesses, and then he says, "I will help you get the $30,000 payment, payment, but I want $3,000 cut." That's corruption, pure and simple corruption among, in the city of Portsmouth. And why do I say that? Because Ms. Lisa Burke mentioned that she had a constituent that came in. And what figure did that person say? $3,000 to pay to perform. Now, I will finish up with that. And I want to mention, getting up on the top, the city of Portsmouth was on for 26 minutes on a national TV program by Roland Martin. And what was his last comment? He says, "Just because you have a brother, do not ex,"
Thank you, sir.
"You do not expect him because of his color."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dale Redman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, and everyone else. I come today to tell y'all that recently, yesterday, we had a presentation from a national violin about the credible messenger trainer who trains over the nation, which he came in Friday. Organization got him in, come in Friday. It's something that we know that is an evidence-based practice that actually works. He actually started-
Sir, could you speak into the mic better?
Oh, yes, sir.
There you go. Thank you.
He actually created and started the YAP program, youth, the Youth Advocacy Program, just started headed in the east side of Baltimore. So, I brought him in Friday, because y'all know that I'm very adamant about finding out solutions. I don't come up here to solve a problem, I come with solutions. And it's an evidence-based practice that they've been using, and he's a national trainer that we went up and got training with. And he came down Friday, we brought him down Friday, he was here the weekend, went over a couple of places, and he was looking at the different areas and things like that. He couldn't do a full survey and that, so I was just telling him about the different things. And one thing he said in the meeting that, I actually think the mayor had come to yesterday, was that Portsmouth is a city that can be saved. He said that Portsmouth is a city that can be saved. But one thing that we have to do that he was speaking about is, we have to get all the stakeholders in a room at the same time and get on the same page. It's not about that Portsmouth, because when I was telling him about, he was looking and researching the resources and things. He said, "Now, y'all got more resources than Baltimore actually have." It's about actually bringing those connections together and getting people that can actually get those people to those services. What is the liaison in between this? Baltimore, he said, "The one component that I believe that we actually need in the city of Portsmouth that I'm bringing for, in front of council now, is what they offer is, they actually have a program in place that when these shootings and different things like that happen, they have funding with city funding that they actually allow these people go to safe places." Because he said, "Well, they found out through research and data is that when a lot of times when these crimes are happening in areas, if the officer's going to knock at the door, we know it. We live in the city of Portsmouth. If he stay at your house one minute, your house one minute, her house 10 minutes, his house 1 minute, and something happen, who told?" So, now, that person becomes a target. So, it's about, I just wanted to come and tell y'all that it's different innovative ways and try to get it out. It was last minute, but they are willing to come back, because I believe that utilizing that violence interrupt the credible messenger strategy actually works. To date, in their city, this year alone, they're down 39% in violent crimes. He actually gave the whole perspective of it and looked at it that we know that a lot of times when we attack crime and we fight crime, we fight crime on a prevention standpoint. If we don't deal with the intervention first, which are the small people that's actually committing the crime, that in the scope of it, if you're doing an evidence-based practice, prevention is taking 10 to 12 years. If you deal with the intervention, you can start attacking crime within one to three years. So, we have to take a method of going with more intervention. Prevention is great. We're looking at 10 to 15 years. But if you deal with intervention, you're looking at one to three years turnaround. It's an evidence-based practice that's been around the world. So, I'm coming to y'all today and let y'all know that I believe that this is a tool and tactic that we need to take more serious. Right now, they have a few on payroll, but it's more that what you can do with it. You're limited with certain limitation of resources and people. He brought to the table the, addressed that he informed us and gave us that what they do in the city of Baltimore, they do zip code hiring with this credible messenger violence interrupters. You have to use different strategies, yes. And during the process of credible messenger, he was speaking it, yes, he spoke. It has been credible messengers murdered, but that's part of life. But what happened with that was, it was a credible messenger who wasn't credible. He was in the city of Baltimore. They hired him to do it, but he had a record that he had told on some people. So, you can't go in those subsidized communities and areas. So, it's a thorough background check. It's just like any type of job. You have to get people that's credible in those communities, that's respected, that can actually get to the actually intervention part and connect with the prevention part so that we can transcend the city. So, I just come to y'all today to let y'all know that with some informative, informative information. Anything else y'all want to know about it, he's more than willing to come back down, speak. He's actually gonna come back down anyway. He works closely with our organization, because I'm trying to get more tools and tactics that I can use in the city of Portsmouth to make Portsmouth better. It can go anywhere, but I want to save Portsmouth before I save anything. So, I'd just like to thank y'all for y'all's time. If y'all have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Redman, sir, could you please stand up? Did any of my colleagues have any questions? One thing I, I do, if, if I may add a comment, is that I, I've, I've spent a lot of time listening and, and paying attention to the credible messenger program. As you know, I support that effort. The mayor of Baltimore, Brandon Scott, and I talk frequently about how we can improve those types of programs. And I just want to let you know, sitting in that room, we had the Commonwealth's attorney in that room. We had a lot of stakeholders from a lot of different places in the city of Portsmouth, and I would agree with you wholeheartedly. That is the approach that we all need to have. I have said on a number of occasions, intervention is a shared responsibility, and you know, and members on this, this dais certainly support the efforts that you and your organization and organizations like yours are doing in the community. We don't get there. We don't reduce crime. We don't intervene and help some of these young men and families to get better and do better without folks like you being engaged. So, we'll have a follow-up conversation, and that will probably include a discussion with the city manager, because I don't know if you all have had a chance to talk yet, but I think that that's probably the next step in your process, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Sir, if you would state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yes. My name is Merle, Merle Rutledge, PO Box 103, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm a candidate, and that's the reason why I always keep my address private. Thank you for your time. I had a conversation earlier about basically saying what needs to be said, and whether I say it now or later, it doesn't matter as long as it's said. People in Portsmouth, this is just a beautiful city, a beautiful place with those beautiful people. And their major concern is basically being able to walk outside, worried about being robbed or shot, or just basically being scared of their neighbor. Things has gotten bad all across this country. We all know it. But at the same timeframe, we know crime has increased, and there needs to be a comprehensive plan that addresses crime, that will reduce the stress on our police officers, that will bring the community back together, and also give the businesses the confidence that they need to stay here and not leave. I encourage in the city of Portsmouth to work with police community and businesses in bringing facial recognition technology to Portsmouth, where the police can know what's going on on certain streets without even having to be there. Businesses and homeowners can get tax credits for participating- Businesses and homeowners can get tax credits for participating in this program by putting these cameras on these blocks, so they know what's happening on their street before they get home. And when a crime does happen, we know who to hold accountable, compared to pointing the finger at the wrong person. An injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere. We have to be serious about what we want as city leaders, as well as the community, in order to address crime, bring down the murder rate, and stop this nonsense. This is nonsense what people are being killed over. And so sad, we know poverty, desperation brings crime. And that's what we all facing all across this country, and the city is just basically filled with it. Sometimes we gotta go back in the time and remember to bring back that family dinner right now, trying to have y'all have a conversation y'all have long ignored. These kids wanna talk. These kids wanna bring up what they've been through. Sometimes the best way to stop crime is to know when a crime is about to happen. If we don't talk to each other, we don't work with each other. If we don't get serious about this and come up with plans and strategies that appreciate our police by making their job easier and making our communities no longer afraid, that's exactly what we should all be about. The community has to take part in this, too. There's nothing wrong with one person in this room going to a neighbor and saying, "Come to my house for dinner, bring your kids, bring your families." When we had problems in our family, we didn't send the police, we sent mom and dad or our cousins. That's what we need to do, get back to basics. Get back to exactly what brought us up here. It's for the love of the city, but the love of everybody, and to be treated equally. No matter what we do now, or in the past, doesn't matter, it's about their future and ours. If we're gonna live with the worst of the worst, we are going to face that because we are living and breathing. So I ask everybody here to start taking a serious look at ways that we can bring down crime and make sure our police get the salaries that they deserve, and the paramedics and the first responders get the money that they deserve to fund and make sure they protect and serve lives. Governor Youngkin sent down enough money to start this process. We need to be targeted on how we address crime, and guess what, we gonna see results. Every citizen should be able in this city at this timeframe to see what's going on on another street before they cross it, before they're robbed and killed. People are getting killed at gas stations. Get IT involved, have them come out where I at. Have these communities, businesses, and the Stop the Violence groups saying, "We all in this together." Because we sometimes don't have to give up a little bit of security or our freedoms, sometimes we have to make sure we are protecting life. So I hope that y'all hear my words clearly. God speak from the heart and soul, I don't speak from a puppet master or somebody pulling my strings. And I hope that Portsmouth takes up my views under consideration and sees the police and the community all working together again.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rutledge, I did agree with your comments about supporting our police department, and I just wanna get an update from our city manager. I know during our one-on-ones, we were speaking about a camera update throughout our city. Do we have any information on where we're going or what direction we're going to get those equipment that's much needed for our police department?
Yes, we actually have a meeting this Friday to discuss moving forward with the cameras. So I'll update you once we have concluded that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Shaniqua Hi. Shaniqua Hi? Shaniqua Hi, are you here? Well, we'll move to our next speaker. Our next speaker is Chris Williams. Chris Williams? Please state your name and address, sir, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Chris Williams, I state 3004, Erin Dryer in Chesapeake. Man, I, to the mayor, to all the councilmen and members of staff, how you doing? My adrenaline is just pumping, so I, I speak for a living, right? I preach at throne rules. I encourage, you know, men on so many levels, and I come here, and I just don't know why I'm so heavy. Literally, I, I love a mic. My mama once told me, "Before you talk too much." You know, but I guess I get through it. But my name is Chris Williams. Don't judge me, I'm a 10-time convicted felon, right? Everything that I was arrested, and they said I did, I did. And when I went off to prison, I was so glad to go to prison because I had did so much other stuff, right? And that was during the time, and that was during the era when Judge Johnny Morrison was the prosecutor attorney, right? And I was living in Alabot. And so, I've been looking at, you said, "Well, I stay in Chesapeake." You said, "Well, why?" You know, you're in Chesapeake, and I love Portsmouth. I love the city of Portsmouth. I believe if you cut me and my blood fall on the ground, it'll spell P-Town, right? So, what I do not want to believe is that the gangs on the street are more unified than our city council. What I do not want to believe, right? That the gangs on the street are more unified than our police department. I will not believe that the gangs and the drug lords that are roaming up and down the streets in the city of Portsmouth, Virginia are more unified than the Commonwealth attorney. I just refuse to believe it. Because when Judge Johnny Morrison was the Commonwealth attorney, I can remember him coming down Barber Drive, and he had a gang full of community people behind him. And we was out there doing our will and our dealing. And he came down, and they had signs and everything, and he pointed at all of us. He said, "I'm gonna get you, I'm gonna get you, I'm gonna get you, and I'm gonna get you." Guess what? He got me, he got him, he got them, and he got every last one of us that was on that corner. Why? Because he had to come together with the Portsmouth Police Department, the narcotic unit, Mr. Marlo Gavin, he had to come, they had to come together to get us. And so what are you saying, Mr. Williams? If the city of Portsmouth don't come together, you'll never win the war on crime. You'll never win it. You talking to somebody with lived experience. And listen, Mr. Redman, he spoken, and I said, "Man, me and Mr. Redman ain't spoke today, and I was trying to come up with a term, and I was trying to come up with a name, and he came up with this term called credible messengers." You know why I can go to Lincoln Park and I can still go to Del Sol? It's because I have a hood pass. I'm a credible messenger. And if we don't get people that look like me to formulate a team to help the police department, we will not be able to win this war. Okay, we will not. Chief Franklin gonna need some money to win this war. I've never seen a war fought, and there was no money advocated. We can get all of the chiefs in the world, but if we don't get that brother no money to help fight these crimes, we'll never win. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or concerns from my colleagues on council? Seeing no other business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned. Stay safe and healthy.